Good evening and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council for Monday, June 7th, 2021 at 7:00. Welcome back to council chambers. It's good to see everybody this evening. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance for Mr. Twist. Please take it.
If you bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you that we live in a great city of Troy, and we thank you for all the volunteers this past weekend for the strawberry jam and all that they did to make that a success on a short notice. So we ask that you would redeem some of their time that they gave freely. We also ask that you would watch over our first responders, police, those serving in the armed forces. And we ask a special blessing on all our citizens this summer as they're out doing activities. We ask that you would protect them and watch over them and allow them to be safe. We ask that you would direct us and guide us this evening on what's best for the city of Troy now and in the future. We ask that in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mr. Schilling.
Here.
Mrs. Snee.
Here.
Mr. Rozell.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Swazer.
Here.
Mr. Widdon.
Here.
Mr. Seaver.
Present.
Mr. Phillips.
Moved to excuse Mr. Phillips, second.
It's been moved to excuse Mr. Phillips by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we pleasure you to summary of the minutes of the May 17th, 2021, meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, May 17, 2021. Committee reports, Building and Utilities Committee recommended legislation be prepared to accept easement from Halifax Land Company. Community Partnerships Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing a Troy Truck Yard event. Personnel Committee recommended approval of the appointment of Brad Bixler to the CIC, and that was approved. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared declaring as surplus three small parcels of parkland. Ordinance number O-31, 2021, authorizing legislation for the Troy Truck Yard event was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-32, 2021, declaring municipally owned property within parks as surplus, authorizing sale, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-33, 21, accept an easement from Halifax Land Company, first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourns 7:20 p.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel, would you dispose of the item?
In for approval.
Second.
It's been moved to approve the minutes by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We will go on to committee reports, and we have a lot of them this evening. We'll begin with the Buildings Committee, and Mr. Widdon.
Thank you, Mr. President. On June 1st, committee members Twilliger and myself met to consider recommending to a building project to correct the issue of the normally high temperatures and humidity within the Police Department building. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Police Department building dedicated outside air unit replacement project at a cost not to exceed $100,000. This is respectfully submitted by myself, John Twilliger, and Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Widdon. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee, and Mrs. Snee with four reports this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first report has that the committee members Rozell and Snee met on June 1st to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that the final plat of the Section 8 of the Fox Harbor subdivision be approved. Section 8 is in general accordance with the preliminary plan. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared accepting the final plat of Section 8 of the Fox Harbor subdivision as presented, including the dedication of right-of-way. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Mrs. Snee, you can continue.
Thank you. Committee members Rozell and Snee met on June 1st to consider acceptance of utility easements along Archer Drive where additional development is anticipated in the area of the Waco Warehouse. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the acceptance of the utility easements related to water and sewer mains on 1250 and 1260 Archer Drive and further authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any documents related thereto. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, you can go ahead with your third report.
Continuing. Committee members Rozell and Snee met on June 1st to review a recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that the revised final record plan of Phase 3 of the Halifax Villas Plan Development Residential be approved as it conforms to the approved revised general plan and revised final development plan. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission and recommends that legislation be prepared to approve the revised final record plan of Phase 3 of the Halifax Villas Plan Development Residential. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Mrs. Snee, please go ahead.
Our final report. Committee members Rozell and Snee met on June 1st to consider the petition filed for the annexation of 8.140 acres located on Washington Road known as the Strayer Farms, Inc. annexation. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by state law related to the Strayer Farms, Inc. annexation of 8.140 acres from Concord Township. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, this committee supports emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Any final comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Community Partnerships Committee, and Mr. Rozell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On June 1st, the committee met to consider counsel authorization of two agreements for events August 27th and 28th. Both will include the use of public property, and one includes the use of public property for the sale, consumption of alcoholic beverages. The authorizations will include the notwithstanding language. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with Can't Stop Running Company related to the Tour de Donut event. Authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with Troy Main Street Incorporated related to the Donut Jam event. Include the standard notwithstanding legislation for such events. This is respectfully submitted by John Swazer, Jeffrey Widdon, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move over to the Finance Committee, and Mr. Swazer with four reports.
Yes, sir. On June 1st, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the city auditor regarding the maximum amount of public funds to be awarded as deposits. The Ohio Revised Code requires bidding for the deposit of public funds to local financial institutions every five years. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared estimating the aggregate maximum amount of public funds to be awarded as deposits based on the information provided by the city auditor as noted in the detailed report. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Are there any comments or questions from council on this item? Mr. Swazer, go ahead.
Certainly. On June 1st, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that a Subordination Agreement for Slim Line Surgical Services or Devices, LLC, DBA Canyon Run Engineering Technologies be approved. This will permit the company to secure a commercial line of credit to Huntington National Bank to purchase materials to fill orders. The Subordination Agreement would waive the city's UCC blanket lien priority on company assets. The city has a second mortgage lien on the building that is sufficient collateral to cover the remaining loan balance of $57,396.63. It is the, or the committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee of approving the application as meeting the intent of the Small Business Development revolving loan fund program, and recommends that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute a Subordination Agreement for Slim Line Surgical Devices, LLC, Small Business Development Loan to facilitate commercial financing by the company. The committee further supports emergency legislation so that the Subordination Agreement can be processed without delay and the commercial financing approved. Respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, go ahead.
On June 1st, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that the application of Smith's Boathouse Restaurant, LLC, be approved to provide for a new $30,000 loan towards additional improvements and combine that loan with the restructuring of two existing loans into one loan. The details regarding the improvements to be made and the restructuring of the existing loans are discussed in the detailed report. This committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee of approving this application as meeting the intent of the Small Business Development revolving loan fund, and recommends legislation be prepared approving the new loan application of Smith's Boathouse, LLC, for $30,000, and to restructure two existing loans with this new loan from the Small Business Development revolving loan fund. Committee further supports legislation that, so that the loan can be processed without delay and the improvements can commence. And that's respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Any comments or questions on this report? Mr. Swazer, go ahead with your last.
Yes, sir. On June 1st, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that the application of 107 West Main LLC be approved in the amount of $100,000 from the Small Business Development revolving loan. The funds would be used to assist with the $2,000, with the $2 million project of improvements to the property of 107 West Main Street as discussed in the detailed report. This committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee of approving this application as meeting the intent of the Small Business Development revolving loan program, and recommends that legislation be prepared approving the loan application of 107 West Main LLC of $100,000 with the terms recommended by the Loan Review Committee. This committee further supports emergency legislation so that the loan can be processed without delay and the project continued. And that is also respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Any final comments or questions? Moving on to the Streets and Sidewalks Committee, and in for Mr. Phillips this evening is Mr. Schilling.
Thank you. This committee met on June 1st to consider the ordinance of assessment for Phase 12 of the sidewalk improvement program. The Phase 12 work has been completed for the area described in the detailed report. No objections were received from the recently published notice. The next step of the process is for council to enact the ordinance of assessment. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the final assessment for Phase 12 of the sidewalk improvement program, and that is respectfully submitted by myself, Mrs. Snee, and Mr. Phillips, who is the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any comments or questions on this item? Please go ahead with the last item.
Okay. On June 1st, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that a portion of Arlington Avenue located west of South Dorset Road be vacated as petitioned by the owner of all adjacent properties. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared approving the vacation of the portion of Arlington Avenue located west of South Dorset Road between Inlots 4956 and Lot, yeah, 1283, as petitioned. There's a misprinter on there. Anyway, this is respectfully submitted by myself, Mrs. Snee, and Mr. Phillips as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any comments or questions on this item? We have a roll report this evening from the Personnel Committee, Mr. Twist.
Thank you, Mr. President. Merrow has requested several reappointments and a new appointment for the City Beautification Committee, and we do support the request. I move without objection that the following City Beautification Committee for terms effective 7/1, 2021 through June 30th, 2023, be all approved at once for reappointments and appointment. Does anybody object if I read them all at one time?
Go ahead.
Oh, nothing. Go ahead. Reappointments would be Barbara Reddick, Cindy Windgert, Wanda Tremly, Barry Van Kirk, Phyllis Dawkins, and Mary Davis, and the appointment would be Peggy Wolke. Can I get a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the appointments and reappointments to the City Beautification Committee for Mr. Twist, and seconded by Mr. Swazer. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Now it's time for citizen comments for items on the agenda. We have seven resolutions and eight ordinances up for discussion this evening. If you wish to speak on any of the items on the agenda, you're welcome to come to the podium, give your name and address, and you have two minutes to address council. Mr. Kerber will be our timekeeper. If you wish to address council, come on up. Seeing none, we'll move into resolutions. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-18, 2021?
Resolution number R-18, 2021. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Police Department building outside air unit replacement project, not, cost not to exceed $100,000, first reading.
House Counsel, wish to act?
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Three reading rule has been suspended.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, I did not get who made the second.
Mr. Widdon.
Thank you.
New kid on the block.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-19, 2021?
Resolution number R-19, 2021. Resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 8.140 acres, more or less, in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the Strayer Farms, Inc. annexation located off of Washington Road. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved without the resolution by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-20, 2021?
Resolution number R-20, 21. Resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 8.140 acres, more or less, in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the second piece of legislation required for the Strayer Farms, Inc. annexation, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Standing. The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-21, 2021?
Resolution number R-21, 2021. Resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing 8.140 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the third piece of legislation required for the Strayer Farms, Inc. annexation, first reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell and seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-22, 2021?
Resolution number R-22, 2021. Resolution estimating aggregate maximum amount of public funds to be awarded as deposits. This is a process that's required every five years by the Ohio Revised Code. The estimated amounts have been provided by the city auditor, first reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-23, 2021?
Resolution number R-23, 2021. Resolution approving the application of Smith's Boathouse Restaurant, LLC, for assistance from the Small Business Development revolving loan fund, and declaring an emergency. This will approve a new loan in the amount of $30,000 and combine two existing loans as been recommended by the Loan Review Committee, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Move to adopt.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Witten. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last resolution of the evening? Resolution R. 24, 2021.
Resolution number R. 24, 2021. Resolution approving the application of 107 West Main, LLC, for loan assistance from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. This is a loan in the amount of $100,000. This has been recommended by the Loan Review Committee, and this is the first reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Three reading rule has been suspended. Moved to adopt by Mr. Swazer.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Witten. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to ordinances this evening. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O. 34, 2021?
Ordinance number O. 34, 2021. Ordinance accepting the final plat of the Fox Harbor subdivision, Section 8, in the city of Troy, Ohio, and dedicating right away. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This would be the first reading.
Mrs. Knight, House Counsel wished to act?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Witten. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O. 35, 2021?
Ordinance number O. 35, 2021. Ordinance accepting dedication of utility easements along Archer Drive. This is associated with the Waco replat. This would be the first reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
The three reading rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O. 36, 2021?
Just one moment. I have to change into a second sheet.
It's quite all right. Not a problem.
Ordinance number O. 36, 2021. Ordinance accepting the revised final record plan of Phase 3 of the Villas of Halifax subdivision and Patio Homes Plan Development Residential. This is the first reading, and this conforms to all previous approved plans.
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Witten. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O. 37, 2021?
Ordinance number O. 37, 2021. Ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for the 2021 Torte Donut event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy codified ordinances, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Can't Stop Running Co., therefore. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Rozell and seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O. 38, 2021?
Ordinance number O. 38, 2021. Ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for the 2021 Donut Jam event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy codified ordinances, and further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer and wine, subject to the issuance of proper permits by the state of Ohio, and procurement of liquor liability insurance, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Troy Main Street, Inc., therefore. This is an event on August 27 and 28, along with Torte Donut. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
No. I'm just to clarify. I am for the Donut Jam. I'm against the sale of alcohol on public property.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O. 39, 2021?
Ordinance number O. 39, 2021. Ordinance subordinating a UCC blanket lien for Slimline Surgical Devices, LLC, and declaring an emergency. This has been recommended by the Loan Review Committee. First reading.
House Counsel wished to act?
Second.
Move to suspend.
We're moving to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule from Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
I wish we could just adopt.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
The three reading rule has been suspended. We have a motion from Mr. Swazer.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O. 40, 2021?
Ordinance number O. 40, 2021. Ordinance loving assessments for Phase 12 of the Sidewalk Improvement Program. This is the first reading. Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Witten. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read the final piece of legislation this evening, ordinance O. 41, 2021?
Ordinance number O. 41, 2021. An ordinance vacating a portion of Arlington Avenue located west of South Dorset Road between in lots 4956 and 11283 in the city of Troy, Ohio. This has been petitioned by 100% of the property owners, which is actually Troy Christian Schools, recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. First reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel wished to act?
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Move on to communications and announcements? Do we have any this evening, Mrs. Knight?
No, we do not.
Move on to comments of officials. Mayor Oda.
Just welcome back to council chambers. It's been a long time. It almost feels like a new space. But welcome back.
Thank you. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing this evening.
Oh, thank you. You are so welcome. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
I will echo the comments on my preceding, uh, the mayor and Mr. Titterington.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. Can we go three or three with Mr. Friggy?
I thank you, sir. I have nothing at this time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Friggy. Moving on to comments from council. Do any council members have anything they wish to add this evening?
I do. Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Snee. No, go ahead.
Mrs. Snee, please go ahead.
Are you afraid I'm going to have to get me some water?
No, you're...
Just a question that I had from a citizen who lives on East Race Drive, the 600 block, about a problem with stray cats in her neighborhood. And the question I had in trying to get back with her is who does a city resident contact if there is a problem of that nature?
I would start with the planning department.
And then they would be able to direct them?
We can refer them to, yes, to whoever. I would hesitate to send them to the animal shelter only because I'm not sure that they can do anything about stray cats. But we would try to help them out.
If they contact the planning department.
Cook them.
I appreciate that. That was enough. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Mr. Severt.
I know everyone. It's been a long time, and everybody's probably fallen asleep, but I have an important announcement to make. Juneteenth is a national holiday. It's a holiday celebrating the emancipation of those who have been enslaved by the United States originating in Texas. It's celebrated annually on June 19 throughout the United States, and it's to commemorate the anniversary date of the June 19, 1865 announcement of General Order Number 3 by the Union Army proclaiming freedom from slavery in Texas. The reason I bring this up is approximately a year ago, the mayor was kind enough to recognize and commission a group known as the Human Relations Commission, which has met several times over the last few months and has coordinated as a signature event, a Juneteenth celebration, which will be the first one in the city of Troy, commencing obviously on June 19 with a walk from the Miami County Public Library to the, I was figuring what it's called, McKay Grace Park at 3:30. Once they get to the park, there will be a cookout, pulled pork, hamburgers, hot dogs, a number of different speakers, activities, events. There'll be jumpy's for the children, and maybe for the adults. I don't know. I guess it depends. But we would really invite and ask that anyone who is interested can come and participate in both the walk and the cookout. And anyways, there's been a lot, Simon Holocross and a number of other people put a lot of effort into this, and we would like to invite everyone to come to this. So that's all I have to say. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Severt. Any other council members with any comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Swazer?
I just want to take the opportunity to congratulate the organizers of the Troy Strawberry Jam that occurred this weekend. They had great weather. I think there was a great turnout. I think everybody came to Troy and had a good time, and it was just nice seeing everybody's faces. So, congratulations to the chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Any other council members? Any members of city staff in the audience have anything that they would like to discuss this evening? We now open up to comments from the general public. If you'd like to address council, come on up, take the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Hello, my name is Christopher Hershberger, but if you see me on the street, Chris is fine. I live at 2717 South Side Drive. That's here within the city limits of Troy, Ohio. I want to thank everybody for allowing me to have the opportunity to speak specifically Mrs. Knight, who welcomed my family on the way in. Thank you. Brought my family with me. This is three of my daughters. I have one other, but talking to a 20-year-old coming and seeing to a council meeting was a little rough, so she had other cooler things to do. But as many of you probably already know, the City Council of Lebanon, Ohio voted unanimously on May 25 to pass an ordinance to outlaw abortion within Lebanon. The ordinance declares Lebanon as a sanctuary city for the unborn. Ohio currently bans the murder of unborn children after 20 weeks. Recently, the governor of Ohio signed the heartbeat bill. The heartbeat bill would allow an abortion to take place if a heartbeat cannot be found. These are typically, the people performing the abortions are also the ones who are looking